One minute.
Yep, we're good.
Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of May 8th, 2024. If I could have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Yes, so is Fred on?
All right, Jen, is Fred on? Fred, you there?
I'm here.
Very good.
Okay, so first we have a presentation.
Public comment.
Oh, Scott, sorry. Public comment. I'm a little off tonight. Sorry, guys.
We do.
We do. Okay. See, you were a little close, too.
I'm gonna take all responsibility for that.
Okay. Rosemary, would you like to come up?
Thank you. My name is Rosemary Conley. I'm from Whitman Finance. Can you hear me?
No.
Perfect. Okay. Rosemary Conley, Whitman Finance, and my address is 45 Franklin. I wanted to speak to something that concerns me, and that concerns me, the use of the word "best practice" over and over with your budget. One of the terms they've been using is you can't use free cash, you can't use non-recurring money. Well, the Department of Local Services says something very different, and they say you're supposed to be doing your school budget first, and we have a budgetary process in which, I believe, caused this debacle and uneven assessment. We're not supposed to be putting just a 5% or a percentage on anybody's budget. That's not appropriate, and that was done to the schools. That risked this school and this budget being reduced by about a million and a half each year. That restraint was only applied to one school. It was not applied to a regional school that is followed, that is, that follows under the same laws and guidelines. The vocational regional school went up 11%, not one question, not a thing. So I am deeply concerned with some of the rhetoric that is inaccurate about best practices. It's inaccurate about how budgets work for schools, and it ignores the processes that are supposed to happen, such as the school committee, finance committee, and selectmen of each town is supposed to negotiate a budget beginning in the fall, start talking about the budget, and build your budget around your school budget. Neither town did it. It's my understanding that Hanson Finance Committee has never met the schools. I cannot assume that they've ever put forward something that actually managed to look at what the kids need, that demographic. Now, that is called disparate impact. Working families are protected class. You can't ignore and pretend that you don't have a demographic, and you should never, ever put forward a budget that isolates one demographic. You shouldn't put forward a budget that only says, hey, vote on what the seniors need, or vote on which one demographic. That is absolutely inappropriate. I really do hope that when you're considering any sort of reduction, you understand how it happened, how it is that they are pushing 5%. It is an improper process within their systems. The Whitman Finance used proper financial processes. We negotiated, we utilized the budget that you put forward in your five-year plan and negotiated with you to produce the amount that we put forward on the thing, on our recommendations on the floor. I want to thank you for doing that proper five-year plan. It was appropriate, and thank you for working with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, active minds.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Are we allowed to ask a clarifying question with public comment?
Technically, no, but...
Is that in our policy?
I think we are.
We are? Is that what, okay. If they say yes, in my policy, people say yes.
No conversation back and forth, but you can.
Right.
I can ask a clarifying question. May I ask a clarifying question? When you said, I'm just gonna rephrase that, that you should not put forward a budget that doesn't address a certain demographic, are you pointing to you, this school committee, or who's the you?
Oh, no. I'm talking about, thank you for asking that question, because we don't want that to not, I'm talking about the selectmen's budget that was on our warrant. It's very strange that Article 2 in any town would have a selectmen's recommended. It obfuscates the financial process. It's inappropriate. I think a statement that says you can't use free cash, you can't write in the DLS, you do. You can use, if you need to use extra revenue in the first process, that's part of the negotiations, a joint meeting with the Selectmen Finance Committee and School Committee to review revenues, projection, and reach a consensus for all expenditures, levels, uses, and revenues, all revenues and general reserves. So, no, that is not a true statement, and I think people should really question, why are you doing this, particularly when your school is one of the most, and the lowest 5% funded in the state, and that it won't produce a long-term solution? Because parents are gonna go with the money, and if your kid can go to another school, like the vocational school, you're gonna send them there if we're not resourcing them here, not even for vocational reasons, for non-vocational reasons. So we don't want, we want placement, not funneling, and they'll funnel kids out with improper funding, and that will ultimately pop up on another line in our budgets next year, and we'll pay almost double for those kids than when we could have just appropriately funded and kept them here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, you got it. Active minds.
You sure?
Yeah, I think so.
Sure? You ready? Sure?
Folks, ready?
Okay. Active minds, please.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We're so glad to be here. We're the founders of Active Minds, and behind us, we have our lovely chapter members, and we're gonna play a video for you guys today.
This has been a wonderful presentation.
Yes. No, it's all the way up, I think, George. What about the small icon in the far right-hand corner?
That's up.
Is that on? Although, is it all the way up?
Can we get to that one?
Health has affected me in many different ways for as long as I can remember. There have been many different...
Do you want to start it over?
Don't eat it. Slept all day and night, not slept at all. Angry text constantly.
There we go.
Perfect.
...me in many different ways for as long as I can remember. There have been many different periods in my life where I've stopped eating, slept all day and night, not slept at all, angry texts constantly, always worrying about the worst, wouldn't be able to get up, always crying, feeling none, et cetera. But the past year and a half has been the worst, and I felt like the days are on repeat, and the feeling of every time someone says it will get better, it gets drastically worse. School has been so hard for me, to the fact I can't even get myself to get to it, and have no motivation to do the work, to the point, and feeling all my classes in danger of not graduating, which puts so much more stress on me. Mental health has affected me. A lot of the reason that affected my mental health started from my childhood. I've not had a relationship with my parents since I was little, and I don't remember much from them anyways. I wasn't taken care of properly for years because my parents split before I was born, and my mom abused her medication throughout my whole life. Other than that, I had a lot of toxic people in my life who did not know how to take care of a child. This is the reason I matured so young, because I had to grow up by myself. It affects me today in many ways, good and bad. I've become an independent person, but I also... I have struggled with depression and anxiety for all of middle school till now. I never was able to identify the reason behind all the shaking, heart racing, and the outbursts that were very confusing for me. Growing up in a culture where mental health wasn't a real thing, I never knew what it was till my doctor applied it. I then relied on videos to help overcome, which isn't the most trustworthy. I was only able to learn how to fight sadness and despair through guidance. Even when I matured, those feelings, I'm always able to go back to a calm stage, which is forever a learning process for me. My best friend has been struggling with depression and anxiety for many months. She has been up and down, self-isolated, lashing out on friends and family. She hasn't been wanting or getting help that she needs. As her best friend, I wanted to be there, but I felt alone as she shut me out. At first, I thought she was just mad at me, but then it got worse. She would stay in her bed for days. This made, this made many people worry about her, and all of our friends decided to reach out for help. I'm so happy we did because all of the people that were worried about her were able to help her and get the right help that she needs. She is now thriving as best as she can, and all of her friends noticed her getting better. I'm so happy she got the correct help, but I wish I could have protected her from all the pain she's going through overall. I'm very proud of her, and I'm very hopeful for what she has become. I began feeling anxious when I had trouble sleeping at night during middle school. I didn't know what exactly these feelings meant. Not having answers to these things that caused me stress made me think the worst. I think this is a common theme across the board. We don't have the information about certain things. It is a human nature to make up, make things up or think negatively. The more I learned about anxiety, the easier it was for me to manage, and thank you for running this group and forming our students and community, and the most importantly, giving our students a voice. That's sweet.
I'm not good with my feelings. I don't know how to express my emotions well. When I get in situations, when I get upset, I don't really get sad or cry. I just get really mad. I'm good at controlling it, but then when I bottle it all up, I end up having to freak out when I'm by myself. Not often, but when it happens, I feel like I can't stop, and I never know what to do, so I just sit there and wait till I stop.
Some days, I feel like I have the feeling that I don't want to get up and go over my day. I have no motivation. I feel like there is nothing I ever look forward to. After the passing of one of my best friends, my outlook on life changed completely. I see her in everything. I remember and think about her every day. I try to tell myself I have an angel looking over me, so I should go and move on and be truly happy again, but that is much easier said than done. I try so hard to find the good in every day and keep pushing for her. It's all for you, Ava.
After my dad passed, it was almost a reality reset. My dad, my dad had a very hard life before and after he met my mom. My dad suffered with depression, which led to him passing away. After this happened, my whole world broke. I couldn't go to school. I couldn't get up and go to dance or volleyball. I absolutely dreaded every second of every day. This led to me getting drunk for the first time. When this happened, all of the pain was gone, and it was very easy to forget and move on. I started baking and smoking weed, which quickly became a habit and an addiction. Two years later, Ava passed. From the same thing, even though I was not super close to Ava, it was nice to walk in the halls when I was upset and see her and just instantly start smiling. I think Ava's passing affected me differently because I already knew how it felt to lose the one person that keeps you going.
Mental health has played a role in many aspects of my life. There have been moments where life no longer felt worth living. There have also been times where I knew it would get better with time. This past year, I faced countless battles, and I didn't know how to handle my emotions. I would block the important people out of my life and watch myself go down a bad path. It felt like I would never be genuinely happy again. Life was so heavy, and I didn't know how to ask for help. I hated the person I turned into. I wasn't myself anymore, and I would find comfort in being sad. I always wanted to be someone people could trust and come to if they were having bad thoughts or felt overwhelmed, but I would never listen to my own advice. I struggle every day with my mental health, anxiety, depression, but I know and have learned that pain is not permanent, and I can learn to find peace in the little things, and that there is so much more for me in life. I hope people who are struggling and scared learn to speak up.
I struggle with feeling alone, that I have no one to talk to about my feelings. These past few weeks have been super hard, and I've cried almost every day because I've been alone with my thoughts. Every day is the same day, and I feel like they're blending together every day. I go home and either sleep or go on my phone. I've also been distancing myself from my close friends and feel like I don't want to hang out with them as much. I feel like I'm only happy when I'm distracted, and then once the distraction goes away, I usually end up crying. I just feel like the feeling is never going to go away. Something positive I tell myself is that life has to fall apart before it comes to you.
I can relate to this because I have personally struggled with, with eating and stuff and comparing myself to others, so... Just like, I'm just glad that she just, or whoever that says this, like, they're thinking and they're breathing through their, like, problems and everything's okay.
I think, I can't relate to this a lot because I used to have trouble sleeping, and that would give me anxiety. I don't know. I think everyone has their own sort of mental health struggles, and I am so grateful for everyone in this school and counselors for being there for us because some of us really need it.
I just feel like all of mental health is a learning process, even, no matter how long we've been through it, you know?
Okay, that was like, like, really shocking to read all of those, but I guess I can totally sympathize with what this person has going on, just like, everything piling up at once, like, with home and school and not being able to find a break. It's definitely stressful, and I'm happy that they were able to overcome it and be the happiest person they could be.
I feel like this is very strong message because I feel like losing someone that close to you could really hurt you, and I feel bad for the person because they probably went through it a lot, and it affected them much more than the others, and maybe they're more down when they try to think of their best friend.
I'm really, I mean, when your friend's, like, going through something, like, it can be hard not knowing what to do, but I think, I think that was the right choice to tell somebody to get their help.
I would say distractions are a good thing. Obviously, it's like things when you don't have a distraction, you're by yourself, but you need to let yourself. It's good to have that time for yourself anyways, to feel those feelings, but this person said that life has to fall apart before it comes to other, and I completely agree. People go through tough times, and then it gets brighter, easier, so...
I feel like I can't relate to that, and I feel like we're all going through our own problems.
This really connects with me because a lot of my life, I also have struggled with mental health, and there's been a lot of times where it's been periods of me not really feeling as happy as I would like to feel, and it's feeling like it's never gonna get better. But something I've learned this year, it kind of like surprised me, took me by surprise, that it really does get better, and you hear a lot of people saying, oh, it's gonna get better, you know, this better type's coming, but it's really hard to believe that when you're going through something. But I can say firsthand that I was surprised that it really does get better, and you are not alone.
I just wanted to give a little, like, context of the video. So first, we were given a note to write an anonymous secret on, and it was...
Sorry. Can you pull down the mic a little bit? I really want to hear what you have to say.
So the video is about, we were given our, like, a piece of paper to write down an anonymous secret about our mental health, and it was put into a random book, and so the notes that they were reading weren't thorough. They were just from different people. And then at the very end, we had them say their initial reaction to the notes that they just wrote. And so this just shows that even out of eight people in the school, that it's like, mental health is everywhere, and we have, like, over a thousand students, and having just eight people show how they are, like, it just really proves that we need, like, we need these counselors and we need, like, the guidance, because a lot of people don't even have access to that outside of school. So having it in school is really important because I know a lot of people that can't afford or don't have the, like, fortune enough to even be able to go see one, someone outside of school, and so I know, like, their school is like their safe place, and I really think that's important because with our counselors and everything, like, they are there for everyone, and especially with budget cuts, like, we need these counselors because it is so important for everyone, especially in 2024, and I think, like, even if we need more counselors, I feel like there's not enough even with counseling. Like, I, I know, like, I've been speaking to people that, like, if they want to go speak to someone, they can't because, like, one of the counselors is already busy, and I think that's, like, we have so many students that have so many issues and, like, problems that they're working through, and I think it's really important because they need someone, they need, they need an outlook, they need, like, guidance from someone that is older and, like, has experience, and I think it's really important. And so this video is just showing that even though only eight people read their secret, there's so many other people that have their own secrets, and that what they're going through is really important. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Out of mouths of babes is the expression, and what you just said was very, you don't know how important that was because we have people in the towns who think that we don't need counselors. They can go get their own, and they don't understand that you need, some people just can't do that. They don't have the insurance to cover, they don't have the payments to cover, plus you're in school all day. What if you need help during the day? Doesn't mean you're just gonna need help after school. So what you said, I think, was very important for people to hear from somebody other than us, you know, the adults who speak to them all the time. So it's, you know, it was really good message that you just put out there for everybody to see, and how difficult it is, and I think high school in general is a difficult time anyway, and so you have a lot of things to, a lot of things going on, and I find today that you guys have a lot more activities that you are involved in, and it almost is overwhelming sometimes for you, and so this is, you know, very good presentation, and thank you very much for that. Great job.
First of all, thank you very much. That was pretty powerful and very much needed, right? I have a question. How did your group form?
So I'd like to say it was a really, like, crazy thing, but we actually formed it in Chick-fil-A in Hanover.
That's perfect.
Yep, and that's where we formed it. We had a friend that passed away due to suicide, and that, I feel like before that, the stigma around mental health at our school specifically was really just, like, really apparent, and there wasn't any resources. Like, I know if, like, two years ago, if I wanted to speak to a counselor, I wouldn't feel comfortable enough to do that because of all the stigma around it, and so we really wanted to create a club that, like, just like supports everyone in knowing that, like, they're not alone in this, and mental health is really apparent. There's so many people that struggle with this, and so we just wanted to show, and I mean, with all the people coming out, it's so great to show all the support, and this isn't even everyone. Like, we have so many more people that are, that come, and I'm so grateful that everyone was able to come here, and it just shows, like, how much of an impact it really has on our school. So I'm really glad we made this. Thank you.
That's phenomenal. The fact that you guys formulated this idea out socially at Chick-fil-A, that's perfect, all right? And I just feel like I need to express to you how, what you're doing is, there's nothing more important that anyone can do than what you're doing because it addresses life and death situations ultimately, right? And you all had the vision to understand what the circumstances were and the courage to step forward and speak to it, right? That's gonna serve you well as you go on. We need more leaders that are willing to step forward and address issues and have those difficult conversations, so I applaud you all. I am so appreciative of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chick-fil-A is not unusual, I have to tell you, because I just heard on the radio coming here that Chick-fil-A was the number one place for, number, the best, the favorite, the favorite eating place for teenagers in the nation. Yes, Stephen.
You ladies are exceptional. Years ago, before I got into being on the school committee and wanting to serve you as best as possible, I was well-known in town for doing a lot of, you know, voluntary things, different things and so forth, and my nieces and nephews kind of grew up around me knowing that importance of volunteering. But I guess it's really when I moved into volunteering in our schools, the elementaries, I was able, and I'm not saying it was me personally, but I was able to add an extra impact. There's a teacher at Hanson Middle who was a fifth grader, of course, we've all been a fifth grader at one point in our lives, and I see her success, she just got married, bought a house, you know, and that's what we want to see for all of you. You're kicking in that added boobs for your friends and even probably for yourselves, but when she was in fifth grade, we used to talk about astronomy all the time. Now that she has a science teacher job, and it's absolutely phenomenal to me how, just those small things. My older niece, who I went minivan shopping with, for her two littles, which are great nephews of mine, they're only two and eight months, but what's important about that is when they, she was that age, I was bringing her over to the old home school, and the kids were having a ball, just talking and learning and knowing other people and families and stuff. I know we've gotten into a world of keeping too many, you know, you hate to say hi to someone, you hate to, whatever, and I don't even mean to use the word "hi." I know there's a lot of nasty people in the world, but certainly, we're a whole net in Whitman and Hanson, and it can be called a safety net because there are more of us than there are the weirdos, and we're gonna make sure, not only do we help you folks, but we're here if you ever want to open up. I mean, you could get a whole bunch of stuff filling your head, the whole Ava thing. I drive by it when I come across town and down to here, and, you know, it's so sad, but you want to keep doing what you can, and I'm not stopping. You know, I got two little guys, a two-year-old and an eight-month-old that are keeping me energized and motivated, so please, I'll also seek that because you, you need your backbone and support as well, but you're, you've done phenomenal.
Thank you, and I think we're definitely finding this, like, within, like, the middle school. I know we have a lot of middle schoolers that like to represent, like, the sweatshirts that we wear, and then we did a little Halloween stress ball making for, like, the younger kids, so I think we're definitely adding, like, making awareness for mental health, even kids, they're so young, and I know when I was younger, like, I did feel alone because I didn't think that what I was feeling was okay to compare to other kids, and even kids are feeling this, too. So I think it's really apparent to get this, we're hoping to get this into the middle school and have a club there, and I think it's definitely important for even younger generations, and I know as seniors, like, we want to, like, keep going with this club, and so we have a lot of younger members everywhere, and so I know they're gonna keep really strong connections to this.
Is that stigma still, you think, is it still there?
I think it's always gonna be there.
Yeah, it will always be.
It will always be there, but I think it's so much different than it is, like...
And you guys work on easing that stigma?
Oh, 100%.
That's what, that's so necessary. I mean, the hardest part about getting help is asking for it, and once you do ask for it, there's this huge relief that, that comes over you, you know, but taking that first step is so hot.
Yeah, our first step was rally, and we did the Green Bandana Project, which is to raise awareness for mental health. So everyone in the whole school was aware of, like, erasing the stigma, so I think it's definitely, like, even, like, in rally and seeing all these green bandanas, like, you know that people are really interested in it, and they do want to care, and they care about others, and they want everyone to, you know, be in perfect harmony, I guess.
Because that negative energy, if you don't get it out, it finds its way out somewhere else, and it's never, never good, but getting it out is amazing.
Dawn, did you want to say?
The Green Bandana, yeah, from the fall. Thank you. I think of it, you guys, all the time. And parents have mental health, adults have mental health issues, too, so it's not, just, so high school kids, middle school, little kids need to know, adults too struggle and ask for help, too. I made a couple notes only because I was listening. Student said, "School has been hard for me." So as a committee member in this committee, our job is to not make school so hard, right? So maybe that student has a learning disability, school's hard, right? Maybe it's the culture, and that's what's hard for school. So funding matters, right? Getting those services and keeping that. So, thank you. Also, parents are absentee, right? There are kids who have parents who aren't present and available to take them to counseling, so, right? We need it in schools and middle school. Thanks for touching on that, Lynn. It's not just high school, middle school. It's not just high school, middle school.
There's too many. So to answer Mr. Scriven's question too, so out of Chick-fil-A comes to Ms. Robishow and Ms. Seelig in an application to Kyle's, Kyle Cares, which is a nonprofit organization to, to showcase this. Gave a great presentation, they went full board on that and Kyle Cares is supporting this. Again, for the taxpayers out there, this is a nonprofit, this is not really funded from the schools, except for the need for counselors. Saw on social media the other day. What do we need them for? This is what we need them for, okay? It's not just the reading, writing, arithmetic anymore, alright? This is our student body, pre-k at 22, everyone has some issues. Thank you for the leadership in this and taking a role to sustain. Um, "You are not alone" is their slogan and you see it all over the school. Still waiting for my sweatshirt, alright?
It's on the way.
I will wear it proudly. Um, and the other piece, and, and again, Ms. Robishow is, is an adjustment counselor, Ms. Seelig is the new director of counseling for us. Um, they have to be acknowledged and all the ladies in the back who are, I think they're 75 strong, uh, so far. And they also do a, a grief room. Um, so I was, I was able to attend their first grief dinner and it was outstanding, uh, where people shared thoughts and broke bread and really got a lot out of it. And we were supposed to have one last week, it's postponed, we're gonna go again, I hope I'm invited again. Um, but it's really outstanding to open up and have a, have an organization where students feel free to share their thoughts with others who feel the same way, in a safe environment with professionals. So as, as Glenn you had said, it comes out some way. This is coming out in a positive way. And this will sustain and keep going. And as I said about leadership leaving, there needs to be leadership coming up. And I think you've established that you have a core group that will sustain over time so that when I retire, there'll still be a Kyle Cares 15 years from now. Okay? So congratulations, keep up the good work and you've done an outstanding job this year.
Thank you.
Michelle, Michelle?
As a very proud advisor, I have to give everyone, each girl, members props. They also were just recognized as the National Act of Might's chapter of the month. Boo-yah! We're just glad you got that nomination. On social media, we'll be showing all the things soon, but there should be a reply.
You should be too. Thank you.
We have one more.
I just had another question. Thank you, girls, it's really awesome. Um, to the point of, you had said that you feel like the counselors are always busy. Um, what is in this, in the high school and then I suppose in the middle schools as well? How many counselors do we have to students? Like, what's the ratio?
So counselors to?
Who act, counselors who see students?
So I have five school counselors or four and a half school coun- five school counselors. I have three adjustment counselors in the high school. In the middle school, at Whitman Middle School, we have two counselors and an adjustment counselor. At Hanson's Middle School, we have one counselor and one adjustment counselor. Each school also have, has a school psychologist and the high school has two. And they add support as well and they see students as well.
Mm-hmm. But really, it definitely can be a possibility that...
We could use more.
And just, I, I teach at a neighboring high school and in my experience with my own students, to echo what people have said, um, to get into private, to see a private therapist, it's a five to six month week now. And to your point, Dawn, some parents are absent and can't drive their students there. If you have mass health, forget it, you're not getting in. Virtual conferences, some students don't have safe homes where they can have a virtual meeting with a counselor, so this is so important. Do you guys find that you're getting more kids join or, like, is there a way if a student is struggling that they could go to you, where you could go to a counselor, like, do you have an avenue that way?
Yeah, we definitely, like, we're all really connected with each other and anyone's welcome to join at any time. We have people come in and out. They don't want to be there for that week, but there's another person for next week. So it's always interchanging and, um, anything else, like?
I mean, like, I feel like it's like this, um, of like us, like, lowering the stigma in school, like, people are, are more open to talking to their friends about it. And if they're a good friend, they're going to help them, they're going to reach out to them.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
What does it mean to council and an adjustment counselor?
Caitlin, what's the difference between an adjustment counselor and a school counselor?
I have another question. So...
Can't just throw these words around.
...touches on everything, right? They do future planning, they do, um, like, course planning throughout their high school career, making sure they have the credits and the courses that they need. They also do mental health work as well. Um, when it gets to that next level where there's, like, significant panic attacks that people sees the need for ongoing, like, ongoing counseling, they come to the adjustment counselor.
Okay, so there's, like, the traditional counselor, like, I grew up with?
Yes.
And then specialized counselor?
And a lot of our school adjustment counselors are also licensed, licensed mental health counselors or social workers. So a lot of them are, uh, I think most of them are, uh, as of right now.
It's the 18th.
And it's two different licenses from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, really appreciate it. Keep it up. We'll talk soon. We'll talk soon.
When can we order sweatshirts? I wanted to ask.
If anyone wants a sweatshirt, I'm happy to put an extra order in and get them to you, so, send me yours, get it, let me see.
I will, I'll get a list, yeah, that'll be my task tonight. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. Great job.
Very well. Chick-fil-A.
It was funny, actually.
I know, right? Looks awesome.
Hi, girls, how are you? Good, thanks. So I still got them here. Next is the last. Okay, next we have student advisory council.
Advisor, right? Where's your peeps?
It's just you?
Oh!
They all left you alone?
So, once in middle borough, oh, my, I was so, disregard it, it's okay. A lot of people are confusing the date we're supposed to be presenting, but, um, I, we made sure one of us was here, so.
So, so when Rihanna's not here, she's at Shaw's in, in Hanover, working hard, saw her on Sunday?
It's all good.
Yeah, she's got a little slideshow.
I won't just go for those.
We'll see.
Let's go, if you go 500 right now, one for two.
I think I'm not.
There we go.
There you go.
Nice.
Hi, so, I thought I asked for a note, I mean, not a retirement, it's for advisors here, we have some schedule conflicts, um, and it's unfortunate that it's our, our last meeting, but I want to thank you guys all for, like, listening to us, giving us an opportunity to speak. Um, I'll dive more into that after, once we get through. Um, so we did, um, work more on the middle school suggestion locker. With the help of the student council, we were able to make 26 posters to hang up to advertise the suggestion locker for Whitman Middle. We have not been able to make it over to Whitman Middle due to schedule conflicts, but hopefully next week we can settle on a date. Um, for cafeteria, for our meeting with Ms. Doucette on March 15th, we achieved on increasing in the amount of breakfast sandwiches sold in the morning from 80 to 110 because we have noticed that there's been a trend of kids who feel that they don't get breakfast sandwiches in time and that a lot of them end up going hungry throughout the school day. So we're good to, she's, like, working with us to continuously increase that and try to get a good, a good number to, so that every way, that way everybody is able to have something to eat in the morning. Um, we are currently, we are working on a chicken patty taste test to get more students' idea and viewpoint of what they would like to eat across the middle school and high school because that seemed to have come up between Hanson and middle schools, that chicken patty is a hot commodity over there and over here. So she's working on increasing the numbers of that and also bringing in more types of food to taste test, which she has not told us, but, um, we will be tasting those soon, so it'll be exciting.
She mentioned that today at our principal's meeting, we're doing taste testing.
Yeah. So, uh, I was given the pleasure to, um, talk to MAS R on March, um, not March, April 27th.
Can you say what MAS R is?
Oh, it's the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives. So they work closely with, um, like, the state and with the bill, like, certain bills that, they had just recently passed a bill on, I think, um, financial literacy for, across all schools for Massachusetts, that we were highlighted as one of, like, the top few schools that have financial literacy, but they encourage on getting it across all high schools. And so I was given the privilege to talk to them while I was working, which I shouldn't have been doing, but it's the only time we could do it. Um, they helped us understand what we could do to improve on, just, not just as advisory, but as individual student leaders. Um, so some things they brought to light that we could possibly do is include more people on the student advisory, um, more fundraisers, fundraisers and creating a student government that works coherently with the student advisor, which would be another way of expanding it. Because, um, comparing to other schools like Middleborough, um, Situate, like, all over the place, they end up having a student government and a student advisory. And the student government works with the high school and the student advisory presents to the school committee here. So, and if we can do that and implement something like that, it'll be easier on us to manage helping with the middle schools and give them as much attention as they deserve because their words matter and what they need, the done matters as, just as much as care about the high school.
You do not have student gov- student government up here at the high school anymore?
I don't believe so. I think we work as...
It functions as student council, but it's really not an official government.
Oh, okay.
Um, what is still in the works that we will be continuing to do is a meeting with the English learners, do a presentation with, to the English classes with, with, like, the English classes, which is across ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, with Dr. Jones. This could help, be helpful for next year's student advisory to get ahead on what they could work on. Um, lunch and breakfast improvement, communicating with Mr. Mi- Michael Brady, possibly, to get a tour of the state house and have a meeting on how the state would work closer with student advisories besides just through MAS R and continuing to communicate with MAS R. Um, things to improve upon next year, which has been a very fun year, a lot of hard work. Um, we would like to utilize social media more, working with the middle school sooner and more frequently, having more, like, sort of set of positions to make sure work is done per- not perfectly, but, um, completely and divided upon accurately. Um, creating more of a plan for the school year, working with other clubs and students, um, having more meetings with Dr. Jones and hopefully for the future have past advisories write down notes or give advice to newcomers. Because what we have noticed, we're trying to reach out to last year's advisory, there wasn't much information they could give us because nothing was documented. Um, they didn't seem to, like, they're all busy, so with respect to that, so hopefully that this could be something that could be implemented to help other student advisories coming up, so that way we don't spend as much time trying to find a way around things, understand things and get things done. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so, okay.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so we met on Monday and talked about a lot of this and, so we might see a proposal or, and we might see an eight-member student advisory next year, not necessarily by grade, two per grade, but so, last year's student advisory were all seniors, this one was one senior, with underclassmen, hopefully they get re-elected if they choose to run, we talked about that. But giving other folks an opportunity to have some legacy as we go. And then formulating roles, like, the chair, the vice chair and the publicity person. So that's in, in action for next year, so that's what you'll probably see in September, depending on, and the other piece was getting out and that election being early and, and having an understanding of, to the, to the student body, what you actually do. Because I don't think that was communicated well, uh, the past couple of years from just campaigning it and understanding what, what the role is. So they've taken a very active role this year and, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say that you've been awesome all year. I have three kids in two different schools and you guys have made every effort to get out to them and talk to people and really listen and, um, just wanted to thank you for it. You've been awesome and I know you have a great future ahead of you. Um, do you want to share with everybody where you're going to college?
I was gonna ask that.
Yes, go ahead. So I'll be going to Howard University and, um, I'm on a... My plan is to become, um, it's criminal defense lawyer, so they have me, my major's gonna be pre-law and I'm double minoring in neurobiology and criminology.
Very nice.
She should be a lawyer.
Yes, awesome job, Brianna.
Thank you.
Glad to meet you.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, I just want to say, we've seen you present a, a few times now and I've seen you, um, what, uh, goodness, uh, Whitman Pride? No, I'm drawing a blank.
Oh, yes, I know it's been painting the sidewalk with, that was with student council.
But you also attended, um, a meeting with Mr. Evans.
Yes, yes. Women Freedom, that's me and Cody Roberts, yeah.
And you always do such a good job and as you were starting, I, I'm hearing you present and I'm, I just got a, like, a feeling that I'm gonna be voting for you someday. And, uh, I just think you do a phenomenal job, you're, you're obviously so invested and passionate about what you do.
Thank you.
And, uh, and after I had that thought, I noticed you said you were gonna be going up to the state house, possibly.
Yes.
So I would encourage you or ask you to, uh, ask Senator Brady about underfunded and non-funded mandates and what he can actually do to advocate for better, um, stu- uh, education fund.
Yeah, I, I, one meeting with MAS R, they gave us an, like, a generalized idea of, like, what happens with the budget, especially with, um, the special needs classes and care, how you guys some, get, like, a portion of that refunded back to you. And I also asked, how could that work for English learners because there's been such an increase in a much of, in English learners' need to, with teachers, care and stuff like that. And I think that should be something funded by the state also because we can only do so much if we are underfunded and having to possibly have budget, and having budget cuts.
See, you got my vote already.
Good luck to Howard.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, approval of meeting minutes.
Fred.
Oh, yes, sorry.
If I could just ask the young lady that, uh, I'm sure I could arrange, make the rainmaker and principal represent and Sullivan.
Yeah.
She wants to get the husband, uh, on the court as well.
Yeah, thanks, Fred. Well, we'll, you can reach out to Rep. Sullivan, I will do as well.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, approval of meeting minutes for April 8th, 2024.
Motion to accept.
Motion to amend.
Amend.
Okay, go ahead, Fred.
I'd like to amend the minutes of April 8th, 2024 to request a public comment.
Yeah.
With, uh, Mr. Brian Bazanson. Not a Mr. Brian Samson.
Oh, the spelling.
The spell, it's Bazan, okay, okay.
I'll second the, uh, to amend, but can I also add, can we recheck the date? Because it's May 8th and four weeks ago would have been April 8th. I mean, it would not have been April 8th if today's May 8th.
It was April.
Trying to count.
It was a Monday night meeting. It was rescheduled.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
It's tricky.
It is very tricky.
Okay, so first we're gonna vote on the amendment.
Yep.
So it's gonna be a roll call because Fred's on line, so, um, Fred made a motion, you seconded, okay. So Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Same.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Me? Okay, and now we'll vote on the minutes, okay?
All right.
Well, that was one abstention. Excuse me?
Motion to accept the minutes of April 8th as amended.
Second.
Okay. All right, Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Michelle? And Chris?
Yes.
And Dawn? Steve? Steve? Fred?
Yep.
And me? Yes. So, one abstention, okay, nine for. Okay, next we have superintendent's report, some that he's gonna do, and I'm gonna help with.
So, um, annual town meeting, um, I was able to go to the Whitman Town Meeting, um, and George was able to go to the Hanson Town Meeting with John Stamberg. Uh, we had two different outcomes of that town meeting. I will say, uh, that we have right now, after much discussion, as the budget was presented in multiple articles around our operating assessment, Whitman, we have a fully funded budget, uh, through the town of Whitman, with the operating assessment that we had asked for after we last certified the, um, the assessments of both communities, as well as everything else under line 21 in Article 2 in Whitman. However, I believe in Whitman, there will still be an override number on the ballot for April 18th, or May 18th. In Hanson, the operating assessment of 5% was voted by the community, and the override number, and I believe it was Article 6, was not voted affirmatively in the town of Hanson, which leaves us a no budget, even though the override number of the assessment to balance the 5%, or fulfill the 7.87%, and I don't have the number in front of me, is on the ballot in Hanson. I did contact our attorney today and asked which was binding, whether it would be town meeting or the ballot. He was in his car on the way to court, so I have to send him the documents tomorrow. He said that he would review them, but he was not sure which supersedes. John and I had this conversation, because on the ballot, it seems that that might supersede town meeting, however, the legal advice we had wasn't clear, he didn't have the law in front of him. So, basically, what my recommendation here is, we don't have a budget right now, we don't. We have one town affirming where we're at, and we have one town that the town meeting voted no to fund our budget, even though it is on the override. Now, that being said, um, if the override is passed in Hanson, Hanson will have an excess of $372,000, whatever we asked for on that line item, and they will have to figure out what they do with that, 372, 141.
Because it won't have been appropriated.
It wouldn't have been appropriated.
So, they have to appro, have a town meeting to appropriate that money, and so we would hope that it would be appropriated to us, but the chances, you know, what are the chances? Yeah.
You certainly, because this is an ongoing dialogue.
Right, so, so I was there, um, and that is not at all how it was explained to the voters in Hanson, who are at town meeting. The way that it was explained, essentially, the takeaway from people at town meeting was that the override vote on the ballot is moot.
Okay.
And so, it doesn't matter. And the town council explained it that it's a potential, so she used an analogy of a glass that you could fill, to the levy limit. Um, I don't, I'm not gonna pretend to recreate it, because I didn't really understand it. My takeaway, and I think what everybody in that meeting, and I think if you look on social media, the consensus was, there is no school budget, they don't get more money, there's no override, hooray, we voted it down. So, that's really important for us, because people who would come out and potentially vote for an override, think that it's moot. Consequently, people who would be totally against it also think it's moot, so it's not, I just don't know that we should, I mean, obviously, I think that our council should speak to Hanson's town council to find, so that we're all on the same page, so that someone can communicate the accurate information and the facts to the people of Hanson, um, because that right now, that, what I just said is what people think, and for us on this committee to make decisions moving forward, I think that, um, thinking that there's an override that could pass, and then they'll have extra money, that's not, I don't think that's where, like, we should put our eggs in that basket, I think that the general consensus that it's moot. Whether that's accurate or not, or factual, that was the way that everybody left that meeting, believing in it.
I agree.
So, the law is, right now, if that's, if that's what is presented, the law is, we have no budget, so we have to reassess.
Right.
So, it would be up to the committee to reassess based on your feelings of one town actually appropriating a budget and one town not. That means zero budget, so we can send them a new assessment, and they would have to schedule a town meeting, they have, the town meeting has to be posted for at least 14 days before that. So, we could send them another assessment prior to the election on the 18th, and then go from there. However, that plays out if, for say, the override, because we're sending, if we decide tonight to send a new assessment, that's the assessment that both towns have to act upon. Town council in Whitman now said, and was a little bit more clear, I think, my interpretation, and it was pretty on point, both towns have to approve the budget, or we don't have a budget, however, if the school committee doesn't, if they reassess after no budget, doesn't increase the assessment, there will be no need for another town meeting in Whitman, because everything has been appropriated outside of an override. So, there wouldn't be a need for a town meeting in Whitman if the school committee made an assessment of as is or lower. If the school committee today or in the future decided to increase the assessment, Whitman would have to come back to cover that increase. But right now, they have met the target on this side. On this side, they haven't, so if this committee decides, we don't have a budget, and that's what it looks like, and that was John and I's first inkling, if we don't have a budget, that's why Beth and I talked about putting this on the agenda today, that we don't have a budget, because we don't have consensus between the two communities. So, that would be your job to reassess either today or at a future meeting going forward. The dangling chat out here is, we have two ballot questions of an override in both communities. My assumption, because of town meeting, is that taxpayers in Whitman will probably vote no on the override, because it's already been appropriated. If they tended to vote yes, that money, again, talking to John, former town administrator, Whitman would be, have an influx of $509,000, because it'd be appropriated, and the ballot is a binding ballot to put in their town, it would raise that levy. And the town of Hanson, on the flip side, if they appropriated it, then even if we reassessed, they would already have the assessed number, and the override number would have to go to town meeting for appropriation, because right now, there's no appropriation for that. The only question that I had for Andy was, that's what it says here. I said, so, on the ballot, is it binding, or is town meeting binding? And that's what he couldn't answer for me in the car. That's why I have to get back to him.
So, knowing these things, and before we have more conversation, okay, and my recommendation, we had a lot of discussion on our assessment, we had a lot of discussion back and forth, and a lot of meetings, and my recommendation is to keep the assessment as is. And, um, you know, that's just my thoughts, um, you know, I don't, I don't want to go over, we have one town that has already approved it, I would say, you know, let's go for it. We've had, there's been some conversations with Hanson people, um, that, you know, might be doing something after they, but we have to wait till after the election, unfortunately for everybody. So, I know, Chris?
Yeah.
And then you, Glenn.
I've, I'd like to ask our attorney a question, and I thought I heard this explained at Whitman Town Meeting this way, um, that even if this, this article, I'm reading Hanson's article, it's very similar to the verbiage in Whitman's article, 49, I think, this is Article 6 in Hanson, and I was, as it was explained to me, as I remember, that this was basically a formality to avoid having to reconvene a town meeting to appropriate, uh, the funds if there is, if the override's approved. And I'm not sure about that, but I'd be interested in asking that question, because if that's the case, it's not an either or, it's that they both are binding. The, so, that's what I'd like to have.
Okay, I think that we're on the same page of that question, because what my understanding from Whitman Town Council was, that it goes on, but the fact that Whitman appropriated through another funding source, kind of made that void, see, Hanson hasn't appropriated through another funding source, and that's, that's why I said, so what's binding, is it the town meeting thing, is it the town meeting vote from Hanson on Article 6, or is it the ballot which supersedes? And John and I were going back on, in Mass General laws today, and that's the call of the attorney, but I will clarify with your comment as well, Chris, tomorrow when I speak to him. I'm just sending him all the documents tomorrow.
I agree, Hillary, the town thinks that this is a done deal, like, they got rid of this. I get that, but you say we do it, we leave it as is, what's the next step?
It'll go on the ballot.
Okay.
Okay, if it doesn't get approved, it goes back to the, we've just given them an assessment.
What was the purpose of that last town meeting, then? What did they vote on?
The article itself.
The article itself, okay, so.
Okay, so the article itself got ripped up, they got rid of it.
Basically, yes.
One of the two.
One of the two, not in Whitman, but in Hanson.
I'm only talking about Hanson right now.
But we have to reassess both, we have to give them an assessment.
Your article is gone, and we voted it down, now we want, we're gonna hand them the exact same article.
Yes, we are.
They're very happy about that.
So, this is the process anyway, so if we don't have a budget-
I'm not saying we don't hand it to them.
But just the process of this, if we don't have a budget, it gets kicked back, so either town, if it's not consensus, because we're a two-town district, it comes back to the school committee for reassessment. Up, down, it just is a blank slate, you reassess. You send it back to the community, they then have a town meeting on that. If that, if we come back with the same thing, one and one, or zero two, it comes back to the committee for a third time to reassess, and then go to a super town meeting, which is a combination of both communities, and it's majority on that.
And that would be the final, final say, the super town meeting.
A super town meeting.
Like the Super Bowl of town meetings.
Right, and here's the problem of that, if we don't have a budget by July 1st, I then go on a 1/12 budget, or I, we, all of us.
Monthly?
1/12 by the Commissioner of Education, based upon FY 24.
Last year.
I don't understand what 1/12 means.
Monthly, I get an allotment.
Per month, until we get this figured out.
Correct, until December.
Okay.
Well, then, when the commissioner then steps in and says, this is what the district needs.
All right, so there is, there is checks and balances.
But if we go on a, if we go on a one-
The people aren't gonna be very happy.
Correct.
Right now, if we hand them back the same exact article.
The thing is, I, being in Hanson, I don't know if you know what Whitman did. Whitman decided that during the town meeting.
Yes.
Um, the finance committee presented the opportunity for them to be other, for the other funding to come in.
Right, so it ain't coming out of their pockets.
Right.
Right, it's there, it's in the, it's in your savings account, you take it out.
I get it.
And so, um, the thought process is that, well, might be the same in Hanson.
They voted because they don't want to take it out of their bank account, their personal bank account.
That's correct.
Not because somebody, you know, some town bank, they don't care about a town bank.
Right, so that could make the difference.
If Hanson does that, everybody would just-
Be okay.
Be okay. So, that's a-
So, that's, that's the, I don't know, I can't speak for them.
I'm also handing them back the same article, I'm not saying I'm not.
So, just clarifying too, in Whitman, Glenn, because I know you're at Hanson, the Whitman Finance Committee didn't vote to support the selectmen's budget.
Okay.
And they voted 08.
Oh, wow.
To not, because they had an alternative funding source, a free cash and stabilization for every article, or everything in Article 2.
Does Hanson have that kind?
So, I'm not sure, I know they have both, you know, I'm not privy to that, but the, in Whitman, the finance committee took it upon themselves to go back and forth with the select board, or selectmen at this point, to say, we have an alternative fund. Instead of going to the taxpayers' pockets, we can fix this with one-time funds.
With one-time funds.
That wasn't an opportunity for, for the taxpayers of Hanson at this point.
Okay.
Okay?
And in our budget, we took some out of our own personal.
Hundred percent, $250,000.
Be nice if they would do the same.
Thank you very much.
That's not, I have no opinion.
I feel much better, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Dawn.
To Glenn's point, yeah, it's a process, and I just wanted to say to Glenn, right, Hanson citizens may not appreciate going back to town meeting, Glenn, a second time, and being asked the same dollar amount.
Yeah, they are.
But I support that, because that's democracy, right? Those citizens will have the opportunity to say no again, and then it will come back and in committee, 10 of us will discuss that. You're, you're-
Go, go, go.
The last portion of that, though, that process that we're driving, is what? Is that-
I'm sorry, could I finish?
Oh, I thought you were.
That's okay.
Could you clarify that for him, if you don't mind?
The last process is super town meeting.
Yes, and what comes about.
Oh, right, combined, two towns, right, and even if it's rejected by the majority, then we still don't have a budget, and we have to then assess that dollar amount again, right, and then the majority has spoken, yeah. But I was just gonna add one more thing, I did hear from the moderator, I only listened to the first five or 10 minutes of Hanson Town Meeting, and he said, your free cash in Hanson is in the bank at 1.4 million, and your stabilization account is 1.4 million, so you're teetering on almost $3 million.
And we have 300 grand off?
300 off, when you have 300 in the bank.
392.
Oh, 10%.
392.
Thank you. Thought that was important, because of the way it plays out with Whitman being, you know.
And I just, again, remind people who are watching, by July 1st, if we don't have an approved school budget, I'm on 1/12 of fiscal 24, which is problematic to fund our district.
And which would mean cuts.
Which would mean pink slips at this point, correct, until we have a budget.
Steve?
And our next scheduled meeting after town election, so everyone's clear, is our reorg on May 20th.
Correct.
A Monday, I've got my Wednesdays down now. And that is just to reorganize and maybe appoint, um, subcommittees, but that can be done at a later date.
Yeah.
We would need another meeting.
We could have, we could have a business meeting that day, as long as any new member is sworn in, and we-
Oh, gotcha, right.
And we have, it's a, it's a regular scheduled meeting, absolutely, so if we have to reassess or discuss anything around the finances of that Saturday, it's a regularly scheduled school committee meeting, with our new membership, whoever's elected, and they will make decisions as a board.
So, basically, we would amend, uh, agenda like we gave for tonight.
Whatever we need to do.
Yeah, but, and you also have to know that the town of Whitman, the town of Hanson, can call for a town meeting earlier than that, if they, they just need 14 days.
Right.
So, they can call it and settle it, even be, well, technically, there's not enough time now, there's not enough time now, but.
Before July 1st.
Before July 1st, there's plenty of time.
Do you mind if I add one more thing? So, I don't know if this is on Hanson's, but I brought in our annual town meeting warrant, and part of Article 1 in Nordland talks about what town officers are going to be on the ballot, but it then says polls are open, and it says the time, 9 to 5, Saturday, 18th of May, um, which, both of which, the election and the town meeting constitutes the annual meeting, and this call was issued in accordance with the vote of the town of Whitman passed January 29th, 1902. So, I think both, and I'm just saying, I'm no expert, I'm glad you are asking, Andy, Jeff, so thank you, but that's just what we've always had, I was saying that it takes both to, but this is a whole nother thing, but I just wanted to-
It's very confusing, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of pieces, and it's good to just have it out there.
Yeah, Chris has something.
Madam Chair?
All right.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me.
Is there a line?
No, you're in front.
Yeah, me on, Fred.
Just a minute, Fred.
I just wanted to address something that I've heard, I heard throughout the night, and a lot since our meeting, in regards to the override. And a criticism levied to us for not doing enough to support an override, to promote supporting an override, um, and I think that's fair, I think, I don't, I didn't, we didn't do anything, so, it, what? I mean, was there any push to promote the override? I mean, I just think we, in the, in, you know, in the name of being honest and holding ourselves accountable, I mean, that's, that's part of the situation that we need to, you know, include.
Well, yeah, I'll make a comment to that, some of us might not have agreed to, agreed with the override itself. We wanted the, if that was the only way the budget was gonna be passed, then I'm sure we would be voting for the override.
Another criticism has been levied, is that we broke a deal we had with the selectmen. So, I'm just, you know, like I said, I, when I, I didn't know, I wasn't aware of the finance committee's plan, that wasn't presented to us when we had our last meeting, when the focus was on lowering our assessment, um, it wasn't an option to consider at that point. So, you know, I, and I, believe me, I'd love to get into all that transpired on Monday, um, before, during, and up to the vote, I think that, I think it'd be a good dialogue to have, to kind of give some insight on how that all played out. So, if you guys be open to a discussion, an honest discussion about what transpired, I'd be willing to do that.
It's not for tonight.
No, okay. No? Okay.
Fred?
Madam Chair? First of all, we, we can encourage people to vote. We can't tell them how to vote. I know that's, you know, a fine line, but we've got to be careful as elected officials on that regard.
I'd like to speak to Fred if I could.
The second thing is, in us reassessing or redoing the, the assessment, does that negate everything that was done prior? And are we forcing Whitman into a town meeting? And, you know, what is, what are the legal ramifications as far as us doing a reassessment? You know, does it negate everything that had been done? And I know you can't answer that, but I'd like to see that question asked the council.
So Fred, just to your part, Town Council addressed that at, at town meeting, saying if the School Committee, if the budget, because they already knew, you know, on the Whitman side, what Hanson had voted for Article 6. So it started buzzing around town meeting. She addressed it, said a failed budget, a reassessment of the same or lower would not require a town meeting in Whitman. An assessment higher would require the town to have another town meeting to appropriate those funds to a higher assessment. Whitman has already secured the funds.
Can I respond to Fred?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Fred, I was, I've heard that sentiment before as well, how we're not allowed to advocate. And so maybe you could help me, I'm sure you've been on this website before, Fred, the State Ethics website.
iPhone?
So it says, "May not do," is the second part of what public elected officials may not do. "May not do political activities by public employees that generally are prohibited by the conflict of interest law. In general, a public employee may not use his public position to engage in political activity." Section 23B, 2, sub-whatever. "Of the conflict of interest laws prohibits the use of one's public position to engage in political activity because a public employee who does it so is using his official position to secure for himself or others, such as a candidate or ballot question committee. Unwarranted privileges of substantial value that are not properly available to similarly situated persons." There are two exceptions to this general rule, and this is the part that I am looking for clarification on. First, elected officials and public, public employees who hold policymaking positions have more leeway to make statements about, about, and take action concerning ballot questions while using their public positions and public resources than do, they have more ability to do that, than do appointed public employees who do not hold policymaking positions. Second, elected officials have greater latitude than non-elected public employees to engage in certain other election-related political activities. These exceptions are discussed in more detail below in Section 3 and 4. So, I don't know. Am I misreading that? Maybe I am. I'm not all that well-versed in State Ethics as a lot, but-
That can be your interpretation. I'm going off-
I'm reading the verb, I'm reading it verbatim.
Yeah, and I'm going off a conversation I have with Ethics as to what we could and couldn't do, going back to ballot question on-
All right, I'm going to end this conversation because that's not what the discussion is about.
Could we ask the council?
We did not do that. It's, it's past the time, but we've not done that. Go ahead, as long as it's not about that.
It's not a relevant point?
Well, it's past that point. We've already-
No, because we, there's still a ballot question, Hanson. The question is, what can we do about it? It's a relevant point.
Go ahead.
So, I, I would like to talk about, to Stephen's point. And, you know, we need to have something before July 1st. So, what, Beth, I know you had said that what your recommendation is. Are we, and the agenda says that we're prepared to reassess and vote on the reassessment. So I guess I'm just hoping that we can get the ball rolling on that so that we can close this up. I think that obviously there are questions about the ballot questions and things like that, but at the bottom, at the end of the day, we technically do not have a budget and we need to reassess the towns on this budget so that we can do what our students need in the district. And that is our charge, to do what the students need. And I think we need to dial it back in and make sure that we do that. If something comes up, if we reassess tonight and we find out that the ballot question or whatever, you know, we got different information from legal, then maybe we deal with that after the, the vote on, on the 20th. But as far as tonight is concerned, I mean, I, you know, anecdotally told George when I walked in, I had text messages and phone calls from a number of my friends and acquaintances yesterday, what services are getting cut, what's happening now because Hanson didn't approve, you know, you got a lesser number, and what's going to get cut. And I said, "Nothing, because we don't have a budget." The general population, in my opinion, the general population, and I, I don't know that it's our task to inform the people of each community what they should be voting for and what their money is going to be spent on. Our task is policy and budget for the school district and clarifying that, but the people who create the warrants, it's their job to educate the people coming to town meeting to vote about the consequences of their votes and what's going to happen with that. Our job tonight is to look at the assessment and to make, make it happen so that our kids have what they need.
Right. And, and we can find out the legality of what Chris was asking when he's, when Jeff is asking the other questions.
I'm glad it's not dismissed anymore.
No, I didn't dismiss it. I just said, I was dismissing the conversation because I knew that you had asked for-
It's tough to let go of, believe me. You had a rough night Monday. We'll talk about it at some point.
Okay, so I, I would like, I need to have somebody pose a motion so that we can do this.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the vote of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee on April 8, 2024.
Yep, you're correct.
Second.
Okay, do we need to have the exact numbers?
Is that motion, like, sufficient?
Yeah, so John, what's your, do we have to go through all the numbers? Or do we, can we just reaffirm what was sent?
I have the letter.
Yeah, so do I, I have.
Yes, and we, I have the, I have the actual assessment number.
Okay, all right, so read for Whitman and read for Hanson, okay? You have the exact number, just the assessment part, Don, just the, not the busing, not the, not the debt assessment, just the operating.
So, motion to reaffirm the vote taken by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee on April 8, 2024, to set the FY '25 operating assessment for the town of Whitman And for the town of Hanson, FY '25 operating assessment at $14,974,735.
Second.
Okay. We've had the discussion, I guess?
If I may have discussion.
Go ahead.
At Whitman Town Meeting, I did make a comment that, at that time, I was not in support of the ballot question for the override. For the sake that I wasn't rejecting the school budget as a whole, I was rejecting how it was being presented to the voters on town meeting floor. So in that respect, I supported the assessment that we, I voted as a School Committee member in Whitman. So that would more or less be my discussion on why I may or may not have actively supported an override, because I was supporting that assessment number for Whitman specifically, $19,135,687.
Okay, so proceed to the vote then? All right, Hillary.
Yes.
And David.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And Glenn? Okay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Steve? Fred?
Abstained.
And me, yes. Okay, so nine, so we have the votes to do that. We had to have seven votes in the affirmative to do that, so we did. 9-0-1. Okay. Next, we have a present, a short presentation on Safe Roots to School. I don't know. Did you want to start on that?
Oh, sure.
Well, I know that, well, here comes Jeff.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Steve.
Will we discuss? Is it, has a discussion taken place with the Select Board of Hanson in saying, "Could you do what Whitman did?"
Well, we can't do that. That's up to them. So, you know, it-
Of course it is up to them.
Yeah, we can't, I can't, we can't tell them how to do that. It's just like when we sat down with them. We didn't agree to an override. We agreed that we were going to try to lower the, our assessment down to help that if they, because we were told at the time that they're, both towns were going to be using their free cash to, to balance the budget. And that they had to have an override because they didn't have enough free cash and stuff to do that. Okay, that's why, and so, the agreement was we would come to you and lower the assessment, which we did.
Which you did.
Proposed to lower the assessment. There was no agreement to the proposal.
Yeah, we didn't agree to it. We said that we would propose it to you folks. You would vote. I didn't make any agreement. Jeff didn't make any agreement. We met with both sides. We met with both chairs of the Boards of Selectmen and the two town administrators. And we talked about it, and they gave us their problem. And also, they said it at our School Committee meeting, that they were both going to have to use free cash to fund their budget. And so with that, with that information, because we only had that information to go by, that's why we agreed to lower our assessment, okay? And that Jeff could do it, okay? But if this does not go, you know, could Hanson do the same? Yeah, but that's, that's not for us to do. Just like, we couldn't tell them, "You can't have an override for the budget." We couldn't do that because we found out legally they could, we could give them our assessment. We can't tell them how to fund it. The town has to determine that.
Maybe they wanted to wait till the town meeting to see what steps.
Maybe they did.
Now they, you know.
Could be, could be true.
One of, one of the conversations, the Chair of the Finance Committee called me the next week and said, "The School Committee is, voted the override?" And I said, "The School Committee did not vote the override. The School Committee voted the assessment. And anything you could do to support, and anything we could do to support, we would support the override. We want it funded." I said, "Rick, all we want to do is have our budget funded." They would support that. And he said, "Well, the Finance Committee voted 0-8 with an alternative method. That was never presented to the-"
We didn't know that ahead of time.
This was never presented before. And then through conversation, they said they were going to use free cash and stabilization funds, which was an extensive dialogue at town meeting. I've never had that conversation with, with Kevin from the Hanson FinCom, and I would encourage that phone call. But I, it's not my job to reach out to them, to, it's our job here collectively to set an assessment. That's the law. And it's up to the towns to come up and fund it. And sometimes they will say, "Can you lower? This is what we can do," you know? And, and that's why Beth and I said, "We will agree to bring a proposal to the School Committee. You had already assessed here, to potentially lower it to fit their budget." That's the collaborative effort that we've talked about in collegiality. However, that FinCom proposal was not included in the dialogue we had at the time. I, I, that just didn't happen. And it seemed visually, as just an onlooker, that there were at odds at how to fund the Whitman budget, or the, or the school budget or Article 2. There was difference of opinion between the Selectmen, Select Board, and the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Can I add something, please?
We'll make, we have a lot of-
Yeah, I'll try to make it quick. Yeah, so to that point, what you mentioned, the FinCom Chair, he had heard that we voted the, the, you know, in support of the override. So, is that not true?
No, it's not.
No, no, I'm asking you if that's what he-
That's what he told.
Okay, correct.
Oh, yeah.
That's what he told me.
Yeah, thank you. And the same sentiment came across in Whitman, too. So there's a disconnect somewhere. And I'm just saying, we should recognize that.
He was only talking about Whitman. He made a mistake.
Hanson didn't say anything about it.
I thought you talked to the-
He was talking about Whitman.
I only spoke to Rick. I didn't speak to anybody in Hanson.
He's had no conversations with it.
No, FinCom didn't even invite him.
But I thought that's what he said.
No, no, I would encourage a conversation with Kevin.
It's out there. I'll tell you, that, that was, there was an understanding that that's what happened, so.
Well, if they listened to the meeting, they would have not heard a vote to support that. And I think everybody agrees with me. It was strictly an assessment.
Yeah, I agree with you. That's not what I heard at our meeting. I agree with that.
Okay, safe.
You know, we, did we vote it? I'm sorry, it was in the ballot.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, great. Nice, thank you. Okay, awesome, thank you. Safe Roots to School, I know Don had mentioned putting it on, on the, on the agenda. I did a little research, but you know, you've done more research, so I don't know if you want to speak to Safe Roots to School and what, where we should go or the thought process.
Sure. I spoke with Colleen. She actually lives in Pembroke. She, her job is with Safe Roots to School, Mass DOT, as a representative in our region, so it's southeastern region of Massachusetts. And if the Whitman-Hanson School District wants to partner with Safe Roots to School, there's no cost and there's no obligation. So to partner means for our superintendent or someone from our district to log in to the website and just create a contact person for Safe Roots to School for each school building in our district. And then from there, it's the leadership's choice to engage with Safe Roots to Schools, and they have multiple ways of engagement, which Colleen would come out and she can run some bike safety programs for each of our schools. She can provide evaluation on drop-offs and pickups. There's, there's a whole host of free exercises and engagement that this is a state-funded service available to us. Again, there's no obligation for us to do anything, but by partnering is the first step. And then taking advantage of some of the engagement within maybe six months to a year, it affords the ability to be accepted into grant programs in the future. Up to $2 million per year, they can award to five different schools. And that grant funding, one-time money can pay for signs, painted lines, sidewalk improvements, you know, curbing improvements and so forth around individual schools or district-wise. So there's money available and there's opportunity for additional safety measures that they can teach.
So her name's Colleen?
Colleen.
George, you can speak to, because you were, you were, in Whitman, you've done this.
I will, uh, well, you say that, yeah, I'll, I'll look into that. I'll definitely be the point person. And I'll see what the situation is. I know when we looked into it last time, it was a little bit different, but I would definitely, I mean, the money attached to it, I will definitely sign up, be the point person. I will then talk with them, see what takes place. Because if you can do something to partner and then we can hopefully get involved in the pipeline for grants, I'll look at it. I, I do know that we brought it up today with the principals. I do know, we had a principals' meeting today. I do know there was some mixed reaction based on some of those principals who were around in the first rendition of this. And, but I did say that I would look into it again. I knew it was coming up tonight. So I will definitely sign up, be the point person, and I will keep you abreast of what takes place.
So I would add that I don't know the apprehension with the principals, but the principals don't need to be involved, per se. It's not asking anything of them or taking their time to have the representative come out and provide programming and so forth. Of course, it has to be arranged and organized with someone. But again, I'm not doing this to put an additional burden or task on a district employee. This is for the better of our safety and our kids.
Sure. And previous to you, I would just say that when I was a principal and I was a part of this in its early rendition, it was a put-upon. We did it with the School Resource Office and it was a put-upon. But what I'm saying now is that I'm an evolved individual and I'm not in the role of principal anymore. I did talk to them today. I, I think if there's money out there and if there's something that's safe for kids, I will definitely be the point person and we'll move forward and take it from there, one step at a time. I'm definitely willing to do that.
Steve, did you have any special comment?
Yes, I know Dawn's caring about this and I really appreciated her, you know, to share it a little bit with me. And I started doing research as well, and I'm, I'm very excited about it. I've even gone as far as to find someone on YouTube. It's a gentleman, I can't even cite his name or whatever, that leads kids, and adults, and I'm sure there's more than one. I'm sure there's more than one, pack of kids on their bikes, they actually have streets that are, you know, that, that are taking up the whole road basically, but it's leading them to the schools. And it, it became very interesting to me. And then I thought about, well, what would be some of the other things that would need to take place? Now, this is much further down the line, but it would be like the DPWs of both towns or one town or the other, uh, you know, getting construction and things like that or whatever, whatever those steps are. But I'm only thinking ahead in a sense like, you know, it's not just something that you can do with what you have, because it does improve sidewalks. It does, and I've seen some of our sidewalks where I love the old cement, but sometimes when a tree grows and it's up this way and that way, I think it's a day fourth bike ramp first off. No, I'm only kidding.
Very good.
But you know, it's, it, it is exciting. It, I think the information and the momentum of it is very exciting, but I know it's in infancy, so I didn't want to jump in with too much, but just some of my thoughts.
Okay, very good.
Chair, can I make a motion to just take a vote of the committee if we want the district to partner with Safe Roots to School?
Uh, you want to wait until we hear more from George?
I, I would like to not, because then that's a put upon. That means we're involved and I have no information.
I will definitely sign up. I will meet with them. I will see what the aspects are for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and I would just invite my, I, I will keep you abreast of what I learn and what it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll wait on this.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to skip over school status.
Yeah, so provide that data. You have that data in your back of your book over and we'll, we'll review it in, in June.
Uh, next is the healthy meals.
Nick, why don't you briefly say what's going on?
So it was timely that Brian brought up our food services department. We wanted to publicly acknowledge and congratulate Nadine Doucette and the Food Services Department. They have earned the Innovation and Cultural Diversity of School Meals Recognition Award. This award is by, is awarded from the USDA and it acknowledges their efforts to include different cultures in our food services program. Um, I just wanted to add that representation matters and I applaud Nadine's efforts to include different foods of our students. So we just wanted to publicly acknowledge her and her efforts and this award on her behalf. So thank you.
Thank you, very nice.
And she gets to go to Vegas.
To accept the award.
To accept the award. So not, not too shabby.
Graduation update.
Graduation update, graduation is.
We have, yeah.
You have your flyer from Siobhan for graduation day.
You have your invitation.
Invitation, follow those instructions from Siobhan or else she's going to yell at me. Um, please, you have parking, you'll need to get a parking pass. Get there for the high school graduation at 5:30. We'll meet down by the field. Rain date is Saturday at noon, so 11:30. Usually, school committee members sit on both sides. Parents that, of graduates that want to sit with the committee, you can, or you can sit with families. Remember, you will be presenting a diploma if you so choose and you do have some, some seating for your families that will be set aside for, for you to let Siobhan know how many folks you need. Thursday night, don't forget, we have community evening school graduation that you're invited to. It's in the, it's on, on, in the auditorium in Forming Arts Center, excuse me. We do have six graduates so far. We have six on the bubble. Looks like four more will, but they're on the bubble, you know, those twelve, the total, so it might be a total of 10. Uh, it's a very personalized ceremony. We would meet here at 5:30, it's at 6 o'clock, um, if you so choose. You can sit on stage.
Very nice.
I just need to know if you're coming so we can arrange seating.
It's a very nice ceremony.
Can I just add something to that?
Yeah.
Um, I always want to make a point to talk about that event, the evening school graduation. It's one of my favorite events. It always has been every year I've been associated with the school committee. Really intimate kind of ceremony, family members, um, you know, giving out diplomas and whatnot. It's, it's an awesome thing to be, to see and I would encourage everyone to, to attend.
It is awesome.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
So I know pre-pandemic Dr. Jones had the 50th anniversary classmates and I take it that that is not a part anymore. And I only ask my older sister, what graduated in 1974 from Whitman-Hanson, 50 years ago.
No, you'd have to ask Dr. Jones that because he's in charge of that as a high school.
But do you have no idea about it?
It's not going.
It's not.
It's not going, it's not going to be a part. Okay. I'll wish for myself.
Okay.
Summer programs, George, briefly. Thanks.
Uh, so summer programs are a little bit different this year because, um, we funded them at our schools in the last couple of years due to ESER. So some of that is changing now that ESER funds are, are evaporated, but I'll just go school by school quickly. Uh, Dubal School is going to have, the Dubal School has our Y program. Now, the Y program is not, we work in conjunction with the YMCA, but that'll be where students and parent, uh, that'll be where parents, if they have to drop off their students because they work, that's still an offering. It is for pay, but, uh, that'll be at the Dubal School. Along with that, Dubal School is our summer school sub-separate population special ed program. So we're doing things a little bit differently this year. So our sub-separate students who might be in a, a program where they need year-round service, they will be housed at Dubal School this year. At the Conley School, we have Camp Conley. Camp Conley is a three-week program. Students sign up for one, two or three weeks. It has an academic component. It has a recreational component. It has an arts and crafts type component. It's theme-based and that is available to students throughout the district. So you do not have to go to Conley in order to go there. You just have to be a Whitman-Hanson student. Uh, they've even expanded it so that if anyone can go, but, um, it is open to anyone. Indian Head will not have any programs this year. Uh, Indian Head students are invited to go to Camp Conley should they wish to participate, but they will not. Uh, the women middle school and the Hanson Middle School will have their traditional sports camp and, um, they do that yearly and that'll also take place. All of these take place on or around three weeks to four weeks after the July 4th holiday. Um, the high school, the high school is having a summer enrichment program. So the summer enrichment program for both middle school and high school students will take place here. That is an academic component. That is a life skills component. That is the ability for students who, uh, it is open to all, however, certain students are invited and, um, that'll take place here at the high school. That is a four-week program that begins right after, uh, the July 4th weekend and it also has very limited transportation for buses. We are still working with the trans, this is grant-funded. We are still working with the transportation company. Our goal is to have, our, our perfect goal is to have two buses per town. The prices that came in from that would probably be a realistic option for one, one bus per town for coming and then going, arrival and departure. However, June 1st is the deadline, is the deadline for students who need transportation. Transportation will not be available to all because there's just not enough room and they have to figure out their routes prior to that beginning. So that material has been out. There is limited transportation. So that's for middle and high. If you are a ninth grader going into 10th and things didn't work out for you this year and you're some, behind some credits, that program will also serve as your traditional summer school aspect should you need it. Now, for students in 10th, 11th and 12th who have to make up credits in the traditional fashion of summer school that we all know, that will still be available. That will be at the high school. Along with the middle school, there's also an EL tutoring component that's taking place. So our English language learners will also have the ability to take part in that. The middle school and high school summer enrichment is of no charge. The traditional high school component of 10th, 11th and 12th is a tuition-based program. Other than that, our EL students will have various tutoring opportunities. All that tutoring will, um, for our English language learners will take place at the high school throughout the course of the day. And then at the high school, you also have the myriad of activities that take place. You have all the sports camps, you have the 3D camp, you have John Rosen Science Camp, which is very popular, but the ability to have funds that pay for students is no longer there due to ESER, except for the grant-funded middle school and high school enrichment program that I just described.
Thank you, George.
Yes, thanks.
Bridgewater State University?
Yep, so, um, George, Nikki and I went to a career fair at Bridgewater State. As you know, even if, you know, we got budget, no budget, whatever, we still have positions to fill. So it's a recruiting fair. We were able to meet students from Bridgewater State, from Stonehill and from, uh, local districts that are being laid off. There are people that were there. We have some pretty good candidates already for the positions that we have open. We are also, we were invited to attend a, a diversity job fair Saturday from, uh, 10 to 2:00 in, at the 1620 restaurant or hotel in Plymouth sponsored by Carver Public Schools who apply for a grant to sponsor this. That specifically is designed to encourage people who have diverse backgrounds to apply for jobs in education from soup to nuts, from paraprofessional to, uh, positions in the main office, administrators and teachers, paraprofessionals. So we are attending that. We're trying to recruit as many folks as we can who have diverse backgrounds to our regional school district, um, something that we've struggled with in the past to bring those folks in. So pretty successful, but just letting you know that we will have some vacancies and we'll be posting soon all those vacancies to get some of the best candidates out there.
Okay.
Niask, as I, I mentioned to you, Niask was here a week ago doing their decennial accreditation of the high school. It went well. I spoke to the chair. He made some recommendations and some commendations to the staff. Nothing was glaring that they have to work on. They didn't find anything like pipes hanging from the ceilings or rodents or anything like that that we had to work on right away. Everything was going to be within the one-year or two-year report from the high school staff. So it was very successful and I just want to thank you from my office for those who attended that meeting with the, with folks and added insight. I know they threw a couple of variety of questions out at you, but they were pretty good folks. I think their, 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 one of their commendations was this is the best bunch of students they've met who, who don't pull any punches. So it's obvious that they have voice, uh, because they will say whatever they want to say, whoever walks in. Uh, and that's a credit to the, the staff, faculty, staff, administration of the high school that gives student voice. So it was successful. I will share those commendations and recommendations as I get them, but don't hold your breath. It'll be, it'll be a while.
My turn. Okay, so superintendent's evaluation. Um, so one of the duties of school committee is to evaluate the superintendent. He gives us his goals at the beginning of the school year and works towards these as well as many other duties. So if anyone has ever had to write goals, not, and not every goal is to be completed within a year. Some take longer than that. For instance, one of Jeff's goals has been about working with the middle school, the Whitman Middle School, trying to get that. Well, he's kind of reached that goal because now it's just going to be done. It got, it got approved, so his goal would be completed. Now, some members have differing opinions, of course, whether goals have been completed or if they feel that a certain goal is completed or not. His overall valuation was proficient by most people. He did, um, receive one overall exemplary and a couple needs improvement. Um, a lot of his positive comments were about the wind block, uh, the school status to update the public on what's going on, uh, care solus for the mental health and, um, you work with the communities, especially, um, within middle school, as I said, and working with the two towns on the budget. Um, improvement issues were class size comparisons. Um, most of the improvement were just to continue with work that you were doing. So overall, um, proficient by most and I will give you the copies for you can have. So, and any, Stephen?
You make my day every day.
I do.
Thanks.
Oh, you do as well.
Oh.
But you're, no, seriously, I mean, you just, you know, you got it down and, and you do the best in all of our interests, I believe. I truly believe. And I've learned some things, eat myself this year, I learn things every year, but that I say, Jeff's got this, he's got this. He knows what it, you know, what's in your mind is perfect because it's something that's part of our future. And we know that what you're going to put out, whether you come back to a next meeting, a June meeting over the summer, next fall, we know. You, you've always thoroughly thought out, and it's not us, but I mean the whole district, obviously. I mean it about the, the staff, professionals, administrative and of course the students. And I just, I'm always so appreciative of that.
Thank you, Stephen. I, I just want to say it's collaborative. I've got great teachers, I get great administrators and a good team. And I, I've got a school committee that supports the decisions that we, we present. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Kevin, usually we have the representatives from the union like to come and give their two cents or three cents on it too.
So thank you. Good evening and, uh, obviously a difficult job and also a, a difficult task to evaluate. I don't think it's a very friendly document to use and, and process and whatnot, so definitely there. Cindy and I work with Jeff and his team almost on a daily basis and, and one thing I've, I've seen both as a principal and superintendent, he really cares. He cares about the kids. He wants to do his best. He has to make some tough decisions and more often than not, we're having, uh, daily conversations about budget, negotiations, process. We've also had some very challenging personnel issues and we've been able to work through many of the challenges. We've had good conversations. We've thought outside of the box and said, look, th- this is about doing what's best for kids. So kudos to, to Jeff and his team. It's, it's a very difficult job. I'm very fortunate and we're very fortunate to obviously be working with you guys and, um, we're very happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm Cindy.
Jeff, I want to compliment you on the, one of the first things you did when you became superintendent, which was the statement of interest, right, for Whitman Middle School. And while the vote was completely out of your hands, you did work tirelessly and were at every meeting and every community forum to, to support that. And I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. It's going to live on, you know, for decades and impact, um, student achievement just by being in that building and, and your staff as well, right? It's, it's phenomenal to have gotten that done. And I also want to support and thank you for the transparency and how the budget has evolved and the information we've been able to get out. And I think that's why Whitman also, and I know Hanson's going to get there, supporting education because they see the numbers, they see it. And I'm just going to say, because I didn't realize either, the Whitman Town Report, right? I mean, there's something in here that maybe some people aren't comfortable with, right? Because they're paid with taxpayer dollars, but that's the information and that shows what this district budget is all about and the information in there. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, when, after Beth sends me, I'll review and if I need to ask questions, clarifying questions, I will certainly do so. So thank you. John?
You can be short and sweet, John.
Okay.
I know that's the way you like to do it.
Uh, there's four documents. I tried to keep it simple. The document one is the, um, it's a cherry sheet assessment. That's the state aid, um, that we're expected to get in fiscal year 25. The first document on the top is a comparison between the, what we got in fiscal year 24 and what the, what right now is the House budget, although I think Senate Ways and Means budget has come out, um, but the Department of Revenue hasn't, hasn't broken it down by district yet, so I don't know what those numbers are. So, um, for right now, all I have is the House here. As soon as Senate Ways and Means comes out, I'll, I'll update the sheet. But the top third or so of document one is a comparison between last year and last year's final state aid budget and the House budget, because that was the, the last one that came out, um, before the Senate budget, like I just said. The middle third is a comparison between what you, what we voted and, what you voted, I didn't vote, and what the House budget was and then the increases and decreases of that. And then the bottom amount is where we are with the budget steps. Um, so you can see right here, the, uh, step three was final House budget, came out on April 26th. Again, Senate Ways and Means budget is out, but I don't know what it is yet. As soon as I know what it is, I'll be updating and put that date in there. Um, as you can see, we have 11 steps and we're on step four as of right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Fred.
Uh, I did have a quick question for John, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Um, regional transportation showing a negative of $38,820. What percentage was that based upon? I believe the Senate version came out at 74%.
Uh, I, if you're talking about the Senate Ways and Means, I, I don't know what they've come out with very recently, so I'm not up, I'm not up to it.
I think he means this past year.
Last year, what percentage it was?
Well, it's a, yeah, the 38, 820.
Right. Last year, what percentage did we use and what percentage did we, you know, make our, make our, uh, assessment with?
It was in the seventies. I, I don't have the top two.
Do we put it at 80?
Last year was, in '24, it was high.
Yeah.
Yeah, we estimate it high.
And this year, you estimated for FLY 25, low, where?
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
You don't have that number in front of us, Fred.
Okay. If we could find that out, we'd be appreciative.
Yep, okay. Hillary has a question too.
No, it's 79.
Not a hot item, it's more of a curiosity item and understanding that it's not final until it's final, but it's a pretty good indication what Senate Ways and Means does.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and then document two is just the printout from the Division of Local Services and the Mass Department of Revenue, just matching the numbers that I have on document one. That's what the cherry sheet looks like. Again, Senate Ways and Means column will be filled in very shortly by the Department of Revenue. Document three is a comparison of where we are through April for fiscal year '24 on general fund revenues. So again, the top third or so are the actual amounts versus the budget through April. And you can see, we still need another. If you look in the third column, we need another. I'm going to round the numbers off, $5.689 million in order to hit our revenue budget for fiscal year '24. So that's what the top, the top third is. The second third is my, I call it likely revenues, what I think will probably happen through the end of the fiscal year. And Medicaid reimbursement is, you can see, I have three months there, April, May, and June. The reason why April has a $9,000 interest income is that interest income wasn't included in the group that's above. I'm assessing, I'm estimating that it's going to be $9,000. Our treasurer will have that amount probably by the end of the week and I think we are there. So it's just my estimate of what is likely to happen through June 30. And Medicaid reimbursement, the amounts in yellow, that would, that we are likely to get that 144, 329, 33 that I have there. Again, that's the amount that kind of makes it so that we hit our budget. That's what we need to make, need to get in order to get the budget and I think it will happen. Again, the others, Chapter 70, charter school reimbursement, Chapter 71, transportation. I took our amount and I times it by 80% and that's how I came up with that amount. Homeless transportation, I have 100%, which is $26,000. So the total there in the far column, the fourth column over is five, is the amount that we need. Again, I use the Medicaid reimbursement as the, as the zeroing out factor. And then the final, what that, if this happens, then the bottom third or so is what the final amounts are likely to look like on the end, at the end of June 30. Again, this was just an exercise to see what we would need to get in order to hit our revenue budget for fiscal year '24.
Chair?
Yes, Tom.
Question. John, on account number 4622 at the top, that's Chapter 71, transportation?
Yes.
We typically get a payment around January halfway through the year, but it shows no payments, no revenue received yet?
Yeah, they have not assessed, they haven't come up with the final percentage yet. We have not got a payment.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry. They haven't come up with a...
So the state hasn't come up with the final percentage that they're going to assess for fiscal year '24 yet. So we have not gotten a payment. They'll do that.
Because I know other regional schools have gotten payments back in January.
We did not.
Okay. I'm just concerned that we haven't gotten a payment if there's another reason why.
I can look into it if you like.
Because it seems like they must have a percentage of other school districts have gotten that and we haven't.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
All set. And then the last document is, the Munis is being rolled out.
Yep.
And this is what the report is going to look like. It was unbelievably difficult to get this report, so I just wanted to show it. No one cares and it does exist.
But you got it.
We got it.
It is, it's here and it matches. And now I can go home and go to sleep.
Actually, we do care, John, because we care about that whole thing.
Thank you.
Very much, John.
Okay. Whitman Middle School project. Fred, you want to update?
Sure. So we're on track. There was a discovery made that it would cost quite a lot of money to store dirt on the second softball field. Decision was made by the committee to redo that second softball field. It just, it was too much of a savings to pass up once you looked at the impact of storing and trucking out other dirt. Our next big target is for August 1st, which will, you know, be doing another Seminoles MSBA, but things are right on track.
So one of the things, go ahead, George, but I might steal your thunder, but we're on, we're on track to potentially open in February of '27. I got you. That was it. February 27. So the plan, and then George made this proposal, which I think was super on point. The students entering sixth grade can see the construction all the way through and then enter the building in February and graduate or move from the high school in the new building. So they will see soup to nuts, the process, and then we'll move the fifth graders in in September. So we had thought it was going to open in September. They think it'll be done in December, which we can then have our teachers start the move process. Everything's going to be new, so there shouldn't be much movement other than people. But the goal is to have it open the Monday afternoon.
Well, well.
Yeah, I'm probably talking to the teachers right now.
But however, however, Hillary, I did say COVID did help clear out some things.
I guess, my first question was, are the teachers going to move during February break? Like, in my head, and I'm like, there's no way. But like that, that's where my...